Well, I'll call the meeting to order. It's nice to see everyone. Just before we take comments from the public, I just want to say that there's an agenda item under School Board Business that is called Approval of Flag Poll Guidelines. And it says action is required. Based on the advice we got from legal counsel this week, that's been changed to a procedure. And the board does not approve procedures. So that will not be an action item. Okay? All right. Comments from the public on items not on the agenda? Is anyone here to talk about anything that's not on our agenda tonight? Okay? Great. So next up is the consent agenda. Does anyone want to pull anything from the consent agenda?
I'd like to pull the minutes for correction.
Which minutes?
The regular or the...
May 1st.
Both of them were May 1st.
Right. Okay. Anything else? All right. Then I'll entertain a motion that we approve the consent agenda consisting of the minutes of the May 1st special meeting, professional appointments and leave requests and release from contract requests. For the following. Carmel Osborne, this is an appointment for a full-time Grade 4 position at Fleming. James Finduin, this is an appointment of a full-time learning specialist, special educator at Fleming. Suzanne Miller, appoint to FTE, early childhood special educator at Essex Elementary. Also, an unpaid leave of absence for Callie Goss from January 18th, 2019 to the end of school year. And acceptance of resignation and release from contract for Lisa Foley. Also, approval of Warren's appointment of task units of one-year extension of her independent audit services contract. And acceptance of annual financial disclosure statement.
Did you miss Kara Murphy?
That wasn't supposed to be... That's not something we have to approve. She hadn't signed a contract. So even though what's sent to us, it doesn't belong in the list. Okay? Would someone like to make that motion?
Sure.
Thanks, Liz. All votes in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, nay. Okay. Let's go back to the minutes from May 1st. What is your correction?
My correction is on page 5. It's in the conversation. Virginia Cobb for Westford needs to be capitalized.
Oh. All right. Did you get that, Kim?
I'm sorry. No, I missed it.
So page 5. Enter restatement of a comment from Virginia Cobb. Westford needs to be capitalized. Keely?
On the same page, under Ed Dowland's comments, it states shared a list of facts regarding the BLM movement from the Internet. I've revised that to a list of statements regarding the BLM movement because otherwise the board is asserting that they are facts.
Correct. That's a correction. Anything else?
No, sir.
Okay. Entertain a motion that we approve the minutes with the two corrections that we've talked about.
Motion ready.
Thanks, Andre. Andre makes the motion. Is there any discussion? All votes in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay. Under School Board Business, the first item is to introduce what are welcome or new student representatives. We... The committee did meet yesterday to choose someone. The committee was made up of the principal, Brooke Hume, our student rep, Dick Hannah, a teacher, Charlie Burnett, and myself. We interviewed two highly qualified students and made a tough choice between them. But our new student rep junior is Grace Wood. Grace had hoped to join us tonight, but she's directing a recital at the Lakeview Music Center and couldn't be here. Brendan has graciously offered to mentor Grace, and so he will be working with her. Any questions? Okay. All right. So next is... And I'm going to change the name of this agenda item to the... Yeah. Sorry, Brendan.
Is this Nick's last meeting, was it?
No. One of the things...
I was not going to let you see.
One of the reasons that we tried to get this timeline and really struggled because we were hoping to interview last week, but it was all state music festival. That was challenging. Is we hope to have Grace be able to come to at least one or two meetings with Nick. Although at this point it might be just one. Okay. So we'll move on. And I'm going to change the name of this agenda item to review of a procedure for her flag poll and government speech. And Beth, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay. So the advice from our legal was to make this a procedure. And a procedure is an admin item. So we will... This has not been shared with the administration team, the leadership team, yet, just because it came to us yesterday, maybe. And so actually, I worked on it. And then Keely added great words to it. And then that's how you received it. So this will also go through the admin team. And I'm sure that it's nothing that they... I've been talking about the guidelines anyway. So it's nothing that I'm sure they are going to agree with. I think it helps all of us. So the beginning just states that explains that the flag polls are under control of the management of the district and that would have to go through the approval of the school board. And then the guidelines... These guidelines are what students will bring to, and the administration will make sure that these guidelines are followed before the request even comes to the board. Do you want me to read down through them? Have you all seen them?
We... It wouldn't hurt because many people...
Okay. So the school board will consider requests from students only. Requests must be aligned with the EWSD vision and values. A timeframe for flying any flag shall be established by the school board with input of the requesting students and/or administration. Flag requests will be considered for each school on an individual basis, not district-wide. A petition or other form of evidence of student support within the school in question must be submitted. Evidence requested may be determined by the administration and board on a case-by-case basis. Students below the middle level will not be approached for support. As a practical matter, that means that the board will not approve requests to fly flags at Essex Elementary, Founders, Hiawatha, or Summit Street schools. The board cannot approve requests to fly flags with symbols that are prohibited from government speech, including religious symbols. And then that superintendent... Once I receive a request from an administrator or a principal at a school, then I will work with the board chair to set up that meeting. And then it will be presented to the board in an open meeting. And then the last statement is that the school board does have the right to evaluate whether a flag is offensive or contrary to the values of Essex-Westford School District.
Okay. So we'll start with any questions or comments from the board. And then I'll open it up to the audience in case anyone in the audience had something to ask or comment about. So questions from the board or comments? Brendan?
So, you know, recognizing that this is a procedure that was developed because of a very specific movement, I guess I'm wondering... Or I'm thinking that we're not going to see a lot of requests necessarily come through. But one of the things that I was hoping to see reflected, and maybe this isn't necessarily part of a procedure, but the flying of a flag and the particular flag in question, to me seems to be symbolic and somewhat superficial without taking advantage of an educational moment. So this is a very big issue. The issue that we're sort of talking about, but not talking about at this very moment, is a very significant issue. And I guess I'm concerned that this symbolic act is not more, I guess, part of a broader educational moment where kids should be really engaged in a discussion about significant issues having to do with race, having to do with racial justice and other issues. So I don't know if that finds a place in procedure, but that's something that I was hoping to see reflected in intention if it's not necessarily part of this procedure.
I agree that it should be... I mean, if an administrator brought this to me, that's what I would question. And I think it falls around the timeframe. So what are you scheduling around this time? How are you letting people know what's happening? Is there a ceremony? Is there things happening in the school? I certainly can add it to that. I just... I think it's part of who I am, so I probably didn't put it down there, is the learning, right? So I would be questioning that, but...
Is that enough for you to know that that's what will be happening?
Yeah, I'm not looking... I guess I'm not looking for the procedure itself to be changed. I guess I would hope that for as long as this procedure is necessary or is followed, that that will at least be part of the consideration of how the procedure is implemented. Is that there will be a question about, is this also an opportunity to do something more meaningful than just flying a flag?
Correct.
And not to say that flying a flag is not important, but I just think that, you know, if we are an institution of learning, then we should make this an opportunity for students to learn and grapple with it very seriously.
And you certainly hope that when these students come and talk about how it's aligned with the district's vision and values, that they will talk about what they've done to promote that. Keely?
Perhaps a way to address Brendan's particular concern would be to add another example besides a petition in the sort of evidence that we would be looking for. Because somebody who proposed something where they had clearly thought through community or educational attachments around bringing this idea to people besides just the flag, that would be helpful. Whether it was stuff that they had already done in the school, like the students in Westford have spoken to people in a number of classes, or whether it was stuff that they had planned for in concert with it. But what I was going to say was just that as I was editing this, I was mostly thinking about what things do we need to put in here so that people are not disappointed? For instance, we don't want people to come thinking that flags are always flown in perpetuity if we actually intend to usually have a time limit. You don't need to mention that we have a time limit. Or that we aren't going to be flying flags at Summit or what have you. But there are those other things that could be more positive, just rather add them. And I have a question, which is I still don't understand the purpose of the first and last sentences of the procedure. The last one, because it seems to be covered in guideline number two. And the first one, because I don't feel like we're really clear about what it means, that we want to preserve the distinction between government and private speech because students are private citizens and we want to encourage them to speak? What does that sentence mean? I guess would be my question.
So... I don't know. But the distinction that Chris made, and I should forward his comments to all of you, was that private speech on government property, like if somebody wanted to rally on town green, you can limit what people will say. But government speech on the flag pole, you can decide what you will and won't allow. Is that helpful? I'll send...
There might still be a clearer way to articulate that than what we're starting with now.
Well, I'll send you what he wrote to us. You're so good with words. Maybe he'll have a good suggestion. Liz?
So I had two things. One is on number six. When I first read this, I thought, oh, well, what about the lower schools? And I appreciate the distinction you made in this. And wanted to just get clarity on. So should a lower school want to have something displayed? It's up to the building leader to... So say they wanted a banner that said Black Lives Matter or something else that's not on the flag pole. Just for clarity, is that up to the building leader or is that up to you?
It would be the building leader. This is...
So the lower schools could organize and still express their feelings about an issue without using the flag pole, which is what made me feel better. And the second thing is just to mention Voices for Education and the work that we're doing around topical conversations that are meaningful to the community as they arise. And we have been working for over two years on finding out what matters to the community. And this issue of race and racism and it continues to come up. We, as a group, are meeting on Tuesday. And we're really looking into what those October conversations that we've done for the last two years could look like and are hoping to use that October... Those four weeks in October, like we did last year and the year before. The sort of general feeling I'm getting is that this would be a really great opportunity to dive into this subject. And I just wanted people to know that that is something we're working on and would be part of a bigger conversation besides for the flag being raised.
Great. Thanks, Liz. I've heard comments or questions from board members. Nick?
Yeah, I agree with Mr. Kenny and Ms. Subin in the fact that this is just a flag. We... To drive it further and have it be more than a piece of fabric, I feel like we should really underline it with things of substance, mainly, you know, perhaps, you know, increased value of black education history or like a Civil Rights Bill of 1964 for, you know, a more substantial curriculum that would really... And an actual, you know... You know, an emphasized notification or rather acknowledgement of black problems in the educational community or perhaps even the community in general to make this more than just, you know, a quasi-controversial statement.
I think we're all in agreement about that. I think the question that we can still ponder, because procedures certainly can be changed by the administration, is whether her, you know, having heard us, they will think about whether they want to put an actual statement into the guidelines. Kim?
I would echo my interest in making it be explicit to have a connection to an educational opportunity.
For conversation that would be age-appropriate per buildings. My other question, because we are in a place of having a draft vision statement and no place where we're housing our stated values, it would... That feels as though it needs either a definition or a reference point. I think we're going to see that the values are going to show up in the presentation later. But they... Those are not... We may want to find a way to get those in a public place that's easy to access for people to... Thank you. And then I continue to struggle a little bit with the notion that there may be things that come up that might be district-wide important or... So I appreciate that we're going to handle them building by building mostly. I imagine if we were to see that there were other things or initiatives coming forward that we felt were really important district-wide, it might be something that finds its way across all buildings, which would then not happen along that number six. So I don't know that we'll know the answers to some of those things until they happen. But it was a pretty absolute statement that it would not be district-wide. And I know we're working hard on our pre-K through 12 continuum, so...
These guidelines talk about when students are reviewing requests. So I don't think they preclude something that the district at some point might decide to do because that would be different.
I wonder about that, though, Martha, as I look at number one, which says it will come from students only. So that was the other question I had, actually, was is there an occasion where we, as a board, might hear from our administration a request to make a statement on our flag pole that's in support of a district-wide effort? So some of the statements are fairly absolute because they are really in response to this request coming forward. And being a procedure, it can be adapted as we go along?
I was going to say, if that occasion should ever arise, then the administration could certainly write a new procedure or a different procedure for that particular type of instance. Anything else, Keely?
Just that I think we were trying to reflect the discussion last week that requests from faculty, staff, and parents and taxpayers who are not students were not what we were talking about at this time. But probably the board can come up with our own ideas at any time. This is just about public petitions. The administration is a good point.
Okay. Anything else from the board? Okay. I will open this piece up for comments from the audience. I will remind you, as I did last week, if you want to say something about the guidelines, and I'd ask you to restrict your comments to that right now, please make it as succinct as possible. This is not an opportunity for engagement, so we will not have a back-and-forth hula-hug. I would ask you to be recognized before you speak. And I would ask you to please be civil in your comments. So is there anyone who would like to comment about the guidelines for this procedure? Yes? Please identify yourself to...
My name's Derek Hotay. My son here goes to Hiawatha. How do you define government speech? The BLM is a political group. It's no different than asking to fly a Make America Great Again flag or an Obama for president. If you look at it from a political group, it would be the same as asking to fly a Confederate battle flag. Where do you make the distinction?
Yeah. Again, we have consulted with legal counsel. And this is not considered to be the same as flying a political flag.
But it is a political group. It's being pushed by... For political beliefs.
So I'm not going to engage. I'm going to encourage you.
Okay. Then can you please define government speech? Because it's not... It doesn't say in there what that means.
So I have a definition. The government speech doctrine establishes that the government may advance its own speech without requiring viewpoint neutrality when the government itself is the speaker. Thus, when the state is the speaker, it may make content-based choices.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks. Couldn't come up with that off the top of my head.
I didn't get it off the top of my head.
Other comments or questions? Yes, Paul?
My name is Belle Pitcher, and I wanted to say thank you for making this procedure. I feel that all the guidelines are pretty on point. And I'm glad that you made this for students who want to come to you guys with a new flag so that they can now follow this. And no offense, not go to three or so meetings.
You paved the pathway for them.
Thank you, Belle. Anything else? Okay. And we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is to act on the specific request from the Westford students. This will be the third meeting that we should talk about this request. And we did have time to ask the Westford students to go back and do something to understand student support within their school in the fifth, third, eighth grades. And we asked them to try to come back with a specific timeframe for flying a flag in Westford. So who's going to respond? Rosie?
We came up with if we could... If we get approved, could we fly it for the rest of this year? And then for all of next school year? And then if we want to, we could come back and ask for another, like a renewal for our approval?
So that's the request that you'd like to have us discuss?
Yes.
Okay. And what about the petition? Did you do anything about it, or?
We did... I have a call. Sorry. We did do a petition. And we got 35 kids in the 5th through 8th to sign it, which is almost half of the kids.
Well, it seems to sound right.
Yeah. We have around 80 kids. Around 80 kids in grade 5 through 8.
Okay. So a little less than... Wonderful. Good job. Okay. Is there anything the board would like to add? Anything you want to add, something, Belle?
Well, I wanted to ask... There's a letter that goes on with the petition. I wanted to ask if you wanted us to read it out loud to you or if you'd like to read it on your own personally?
Oh, I think it would be great if you had to read it.
Okay. Go grab it.
Do you want to start?
You can.
Dear School Board, we are asking to fly the BLM flag in order to show support for those suffering from social injustice. We should raise this flag to raise awareness in our community and to spark action against racial injustice. Our interest in learning about systemic racism and why injustice still occurs matches the values of our school, safe, kind, responsible. First, it connects with our study of the Civil Rights Movement. Second, it matches the values of a world of difference. And third, we believe the mission of Black Lives Matter movement aligns with our school values.
This year in 7th and 8th grade, we studied the American Civil Rights Movement. We each did a paper on a specific event during the movement. One student did theirs on the March on Edmund Pettus Bridge, later known as Bloody Sunday. Personally, I think that the American Civil Rights Movement is one of the most important movements... Is one of the most important events in history. It links the past to the present and shows a glimpse of the future. This student said this because the movement stopped segregation and dismantled the separate but equal lifestyle and dismantled the separate but equal lifestyle of Americans in the 1960s. This movement also started the process of equality for everyone, but this important work still isn't finished, and it's nearly 50 years later. All of the peer leaders think that the next steps would be equity, and by raising the flag, we would raise awareness that that work isn't finished. The other students did papers on how World War II affected segregation and how there were black and white soldiers fighting together, but they couldn't live their lives together. Some did papers on Emmett Till and how he was killed. All these have connections to modern-day problems, and during the time we studied them, many students noticed this connection.
Westford School adopted the A World of Difference Peer Program this year along with ADL, along with ADL. AWAD is also present in EMS and EHS. A World of Difference Peer Program is designed to help students, quote, "recognize bias and the harm, the harm it inflicts on individuals and society, build an understanding of the value and benefits of diversity, improve intergroup relationships and conflict racism, anti-Semitism, and all other forms of bigotry." Quote from the AWAD website. About third, about a third of the 7th and 8th grade peers, peer, sorry. About a third of the 7th and 8th grade classes participate in AWAD, and that includes faculty conversations with younger students that build understanding, that build understanding, tolerance, and acceptance of differences. All middle and high schools in Westford School District support these ideas and have the AWAD program.
Finally, the Black Lives Matter mission statement is, "The call for Black Lives to matter is a rallying cry for all Black lives striving for liberation." This goes with our school values because it is inclusive of all Black people, and it allows a voice to be heard and a message to be sent by our school. When schools adopt this message, it is sending a message of safety and school, and school is supposed to be a safe place.
As you can see, raising the Black Lives Matter flag would connect with the subjects we learn in school, match the values of a world of difference, and match our school values. Westford School is a safe, kind, and responsible environment, and to live up to this, our school and community would be inclusive and respectful to everyone, no matter their race, religion, or anything else. Quote, "We are all human until race disconnected us, religion separated us, politics divided us, and wealth classified us." In the end, we are all human, we were always human, and we will, all will remain human until the end. Sincerely, from the Westford students. Yep.
Thank you, Belle. Okay, so for the board, we do need to make a decision tonight. And I think the two things we ask for, the petitions here, the other request is to fly the flag for the remainder of this school year and of the next school year. Do you want to talk about that or do you want me to? The advice we've gotten.
The advice, yeah, that would be fine, you can do that.
Okay. So the advice that we've gotten from legal counsel is that the flagpole should be mainly for, and Kim, help me out, the American flag and the Vermont flag for the schools who choose to fly it. And other flag requests should be for very limited periods of time. Kim, do you want to add his specific words?
He didn't provide us a specific.
Timeframe.
Timeframe. I'm looking to see if I can find his language, and I'm not finding it immediately, Martha, I'm sorry.
Maybe.
Oh, here we go, I think, I think he did not suggest a particular timeframe, but it be more bound than the entirety of a school year. And.
Can you use the microphone, please? I can't hear.
Yeah, I'm not sure which one makes me loud. But he indicated not a particular timeframe, but that it should be more bound than the entirety of a school year. That doesn't mean it couldn't be reconsidered at another time as you guys were requesting for a subsequent year. And he did not give us, you know, two weeks or three weeks or a month. He was not that specific. But that it should be sort of more tied to something time-bound, and maybe to Brendan's point and to the work that you guys have done, aligned with something that's an initiative happening in some way in the buildings or in the community around that.
Kili?
In the absence of specific references in statute, I don't really want us to be based entirely on vague assertions. So I think we could probably say that for the future, we'll go back and get a specific recommendation. But today, we have to make a decision based on what we've been requesting about. And I think based on what we talked about at our last meeting, the current request is perhaps a little optimistic. But I certainly wouldn't have a problem with the remainder of this school year and then October of the new school year if their activity is planned for October. At which point, we could assess, because by that point, clearly, we would have legal guidance as to whether it should continue beyond that point.
Other comments or questions?
I mean, I do think that it's worth noting that what Brendan had mentioned, it seems like they've already done, and the flying of the flag at this point is more a catchstone of the engagement and the learning that they've come to up until this point. So I think it's good to hear that that educational piece was there in this request. We're just seeing this at the tail end. So it's not like it's missing from the request itself.
Other questions or comments? Okay, I'll open it to the audience for questions and comments before we take action.
So if you're late, I'm over here in the second, Dan House. A thought that popped into my head as I was hearing the statute or the guidance being the flagpoles are for the American flag and the Vermont flag. Are there ways to fly this flag that are not on the flagpoles? That would then not fall under that same guideline? I don't have an answer to that, but.
We do have an answer.
One of the things we talked about last time was that if students wanted to ask a principal to hang the flag, like has a banner in the school, the principal could make a decision about that.
Right.
Okay? Anything else?
I apologize, I was just going to say I found the language crystal around it was that in setting a timeline.
We're asserting our control over the flagpole, and that in having it be wide open or longer, we are, in some ways, not asserting the control that is ours over what's flown on the flagpole. So that was where he was suggesting the more limited timeframe gave the greater perception that the school district is exercising its expression and control.
Yes?
So one thing that.
Would you identify yourself again?
I'm Derek Hote. So one of the things that they've done over at Hiawatha where my son goes, there's the American flag and the state flag, and that is absolutely how it should be. Any other flags, they fly in the gymnasium. They have them hung from the rafters, the rafters. And in that gymnasium, they have the nationality flag of every single student that goes there. That shows unity. Flying a political flag of one group, especially for like an entire year. If it was for like Black History Month, okay, that makes sense. And, but flying it for the whole year, that kind of goes over, what about Native American History Month in November? Does that just get squashed? Then how come you guys haven't been pushing that? If you wanted to have an overall flag, I think "All Lives Matter", that is what it should have been. I have that flying out in front of my house.
Thanks. Yes?
Hi, my name is Henry Harris. I'm the Chair of the Vermont National Lawyers Guild. And I'd like to make an equally unqualified and not legal argument like the attorney's advice that you already got. Because that's clearly, I would like to weigh the assertion of power, you know, the government speech and the way that it's enshrined in the use of the flagpole versus the encouragement of young people being engaged in what they are saying is important. We could sit here and try to evaluate whether or not they should think other things are important, whether or not they should be, you know, the control, again, the assertion of control over the flagpole weighed against the agency of a student body trying to be engaged in a movement for the rights and recognition. A huge segment of the population doesn't seem to really balance out at all in my personal and non-legal estimation. And again, I really appreciated Ms. Shell's comments about how the legal advice that you got really didn't come from any, wasn't really citing any statutory basis, but it's sort of encouraging a specific kind of translation of government speech loosely interpreted. So I really, I think that this spirit is really in the room already, but I really applaud the spirit of trying to support and promote student agency and wherever we, wherever we get the opportunity. And this is where we've got the opportunity now. So thanks to all of the students.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So I heard a suggestion that for now, there might be interest in approving the Westford students' request for the remainder of the school year, and then asking them if they might want to make another request for the new school year that they come back, and that they consider the opportunity that might happen during October of next year. Also, I think a number of school districts have refused Black History Month as an opportunity, an appropriate opportunity. I would also remind the students, as we've talked about, that if you decided to fly, to banner the flag within the school, that is something you could do without making a specific request of the board. So board comments or do you have a question?
A comment is, by not going beyond the current school year, I feel that if we did entertain going beyond the school year, then in essence, wouldn't that not close out any other requests that may come in the ensuing year?
I don't know that it would, I don't think, have been. And please don't do that. I think there's nothing that says there couldn't be more than one.
Okay.
Belle?
I do think in the request for letting it go beyond the school year, my concern, I guess, would be that we're having existing students in the school speaking for a population that hasn't had a chance to come up and vote on it. In Westford, that may not be as big of an issue, but there will be certainly some of those signatories that are off to EHS. And there'll be new students coming up who haven't had a say in this process. I think for what we're looking at now, continuing it through to the end of the year should be what we should settle on. And then if we want to do it again next year, it's going to be a different group of students. And I would be uncomfortable, while I think that your presentation is awesome, letting you represent, you know, the students next year as well. I think that should just come next year.
Other comments or questions? Kim?
I'm going to share the email from Chris, just because at risk of Chris not having appeared to have been thorough, there are some cases cited where he's being clear about government speech. And so I'm going to share the email with the full board. But there are particular cases where in that list of things considered to identify the government's speech, the history of the speech at issue, reasonable observer's perception of the speak and, and control, I'm sorry. So anyway, I just, there's a lot of citation in what he shared with us, but none of it is going to provide us with what timeline is considered. It's just simply, the issue of control is that that is always our decision to make where it isn't government speech. And we want to protect that what flies on our poll is our speech and not get in the way of anything else students want to do to express their freedom as well. So I'm going to share it with you right now.
Okay.
I agree that the student body at Westford has expressed their opinions. I agree that we should allow the flying of the flag to remain here of the school session for this year. I think that, given the opportunity that the current Westford students have had, I think next year's Westford students should have equal opportunity to participate in this learning event that the current year has had. I don't think we should deprive them of the educational fund.
We might want to reserve them for having to attend the reboard.
Well, they unfortunately have gotten their lesson to Simmons, which I didn't quite plan on. But then again, that is also a learning opportunity, better now than later. But, you know, somebody's got to step first, and I think they have to be done a job well done. I think, I would like to make a motion that we allow the Black Flag, Lives Matter flag to fly for the rest of the school session in 2018 on the Westford flagpole. Okay, where it's stored after that, I'll let that up to the school principal.
Great. So before I open it up to the audience, is there any further discussion from the board? Okay. Belle, did you want to say something, or did you change a lot?
I did, but now I'm realizing I don't remember what I was.
Martha, that needs to be known all the time.
Martha, there's a comment over here.
Okay, I'll do my own.
So is October, oh.
You should identify yourself.
Eliza Anderson, Westford. Is October Black History Month?
No.
Okay.
February is Black History Month, but October is the month that we have used for engagement in the district over the last few years since we received a grant from the Nellie Education Foundation. So it's building on the work that we've done, and that's why we chose October for these community conversations.
Okay. I just wanted to also make a point in response to another community work that, just because this comes up in these conversations all the time, the hashtag "All Lives Matter", its history has only ever been in rebuttal to that Black Lives Matter. And so that's how that is indelibly stained. I don't think anyone's ever marched against, say, white supremacists with "All Lives Matter". It's only a rebuttal to Black people standing up for their lives.
Thank you.
I'm black. I'm African-American.
Hi, my name is Diane, I'm from Westford. And I really appreciate what Diane just mentioned about having a professor come up and the opportunity to do this practice. That's part of the education and really coming into this role of using your voice and discovering things through, you know, a unit at school, getting the bravery to come out in public, to hear the voices of all community members. getting the bravery to come out in public, to hear the voices of all community members. And so I think that's really powerful. And hopefully, people will keep doing that, you know. I wonder, you know, if we put the flag out and that's, and the precedent has already been set in other schools that the flag is out, you know, at Burlington High School and Rattler Middle School. I'm not sure the length of times, I think it's in perpetuity at Montpelier and Bowne. No, okay. So I'm just curious about having the flag out and then if the student body doesn't rise to that occasion to ask these questions and to make these movements, you know, I guess that's a risk. I really appreciate that, Diane.
Thank you.
My name is Belle Pitcher, come from Westford. I remember what I wanted to say. I wanted to lead off of what Patrick had said when he asked.
It's just Pat.
Oh, Pat, sorry. If I'm remembering this right, because I don't really have the best memory, I'm like my dad. You had asked for new students to come up and present, to have the Black Lives Matter flag come up again?
It wouldn't be specifically for new students, but for the students who weren't involved in these conversations, who would then have the ability to do so by graduating next year, then yeah, I would like to hear their input in this process.
So he's talking about fifth graders.
Fifth and fourth graders?
Yeah.
The fourth graders, not the fifth graders. Okay, I'm gonna ask that we wrap this up, because I'm quite cognizant of our time constraints. So we have a motion on the table to approve the request from the Westford students to fly the Black Lives Matter flag. And that we allow them to fly it for the remainder of this school year.
Which is four weeks.
Right, on the Westford flagpole. Any further board discussion? If not, I'll listen, say aye.
Aye.
Opposing, nay. I just wanna wrap up by saying, I know I speak for the whole board when I say how proud we are of the three of you and the work you've done. It's been exemplary, and we appreciate your patience in being the first having to attend three meetings.
Thank you.
Okay, next, please. Next up, we have a request from Essex High School students. So who is speaking on behalf of the students from that high school?
I'll be speaking. My name is Dominique Sweat. I'm a senior here at Essex High School. So we made a proposal, and we, as the diversity club, which is new to Essex High School this year, we met with Robert, the principal of Essex High School, and we shared our proposal. And we, I didn't know this, I knew about Westford trying to make this happen at their school, but it was really inspiring to listen to this last hour, pretty much, and it was really awesome work. And I think a lot of what we're asking is very similar. We would propose that we, we would request to have the flag go up with, not necessarily a ceremony, but there's a period called advisory at Essex High School, which is from 10:45 to 11:15. It's not mandatory for students to go, everyone has their own opinions and beliefs. But students would be able to schedule their time there to come to a ceremony and have speakers present educational blurbs about black history in the Black Lives Matter movement. Then this is, so it's completely optional, hopefully beyond the green when we put up the flag. And it will, of course, Essex High School is a really big school, and in every single year of history I've had, we've definitely touched on racism and civil movement and everything. There's always education opportunities and new studies going out in clubs, anyway. And I think that's really what we're looking to do.
Do you have a petition?
I do have the proposal, and we had a petition that went out, and we have nearly 400 people who have signed this petition. That is about more than one-third of the school, I'd say, not including CTE and all staff. So that's a very large amount of students who support the cause. And yeah, we have a proposal. Do you want me to read what we have wrote from the proposal? Dear Mr. Reardon and school administrators, Diversity Club is requesting to put up the Black Lives Matter flag. Diversity Club is a newly formed organization that is trying to promote diversity within our community. One of our members has created a petition in support of the Black Lives Matter movement. As of April 5th, we have gathered nearly 400 signatures from Essex High School students and teachers who are in support of our mission. We are aware that there are risks. We think the biggest risk is the possibility of negative responses from students and community members. We think that there are more benefits than risks. The primary benefits are supporting and promoting diversity and equity, allowing people to come together and enable people to feel more welcome, educating our community about current issues, learning more about African-American history. The Black Lives Matter flag is not just a flag. It is a sign letting all African-Americans feel acknowledged and in positive light and welcomed to our school. A welcoming mentality is incredibly significant due to our small 4% population of African-Americans at Essex High School. By flying the Black Lives Matter flag, we hope that it will spark thoughtful discussions on race in our community. This demonstration of inclusivity will also show support and acceptance to all students of different races and ethnicities. The Black Lives Matter flag would show that as a community, we are conscious and accepting of different races. Visuals such as the Black Lives Matter flag will highlight how great of a community EWSD is and how receptive and proactive we are with race issues. Ultimately, we would like to meet with administrators to discuss possibly putting up a Black Lives Matter flag. Diversity Club meets the first and third Thursday of each month. And if you're able to attend this meeting, that's mainly since we were here. But I think that, sitting in that room with all the people of Diversity Club, which is a completely new group this year, and having thought-provoking discussions on race, and having this proposal, and Denise here actually sent out the petition and made this all happen. And when she showed me that there was over, like, 300 signatures, I was amazed that she got that much support from the school that quickly. And it was really thought-provoking for me on race issues.
Thank you. Okay, so based on the fact that we now have guidelines, I do believe we can add this request this evening. So I'm gonna start, as you told, with questions and comments from the board.
So is this a specific request for this year to fly it till the end of the school year?
Yes, so the request is to fly it to the end of the school year and then have Diversity Club come again and make this request again. Most of the people here are going to be here next year, and there's always new members joining the club since it is new. And we have people from all different grades and age ranges.
Great, thanks.
Okay, questions or comments from the board? Let's get a motion on the table, and then we'll have comments from the audience.
I'll make a motion that we put the vote on the request to fly the flag until the end of the current school year.
At Essex High School?
At Essex High School, thank you.
Comments from the audience, or questions? Yes, Derek?
Derek, I just have a question. I'm not trying to cause problems or anything. Why specifically the Black Lives Matter flag instead of, as I said before, an All Lives Matter flag? You're a diversity group, open to everybody. Why specifically that one group to focus on?
This is just the start of what we're doing. We are working to create and promote diversity for all races. But I think this is something, because Essex High School is a choice school, and making African-Americans feel welcomed and want to come to the school, I think is really important, and to show that we are a diverse community and that we like to talk about race issues. And we like to get African-Americans involved in our community. It's really important to me.
Would you guys also support?
Wait, wait, this is not an engagement time. So I don't feel comfortable with you asking questions. If you want to make another statement, that would be fine.
I think the idea is great. I just hope that you're gonna support all groups equally.
I think groups that meet the guidelines of the procedure.
I hope, I hope it lives up to that.
Any other comment, yes? I don't know, tell yourself, please.
My name is Alyssa Barrett. I just wanted to talk about how Black Lives Matter is not an exclusionary group. It's not saying only black lives matter. It's saying that, it is saying all lives matter. It's saying black lives matter too. It's about inclusion. It's focusing on a specific group that has been oppressed. And it's about including that group. And it's not about excluding anyone else. It's not, um, it's not about inclusion.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Okay, we have a question.
Hi, my name is Vera. I'm a doctoral student at UC Berkeley. I'm a critical social scientist, which includes studying critical race issues. So I applaud the requests that have come from Westfield and from Essex. And just because of what our speakers commented, just about how African-Americans have been disproportionately burdened by violence and oppression and silencing within this country. And I do see this as a really inclusive, reasonable request, and as a really beautiful first step to trying to remedy some of the really large and racist stuff this community has faced historically within our country.
Thank you. Anything else? Yes?
My friend has some senior here who teaches. I just want to say that this is a very next step forward in showing that we're inclusive and diverse community. Recently, the USA at our school, the Christian Alliance, put up a bright flag in the cafeteria with support for this group. So I think this is a very next step showing that we're a diverse community.
Thanks. Okay, I think I'll move this along. We have a motion on the table. Are there any, is there any further discussion from the board? If not, then I'll listen in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you to Diversity Club. All right, I'll give folks a chance to leave quickly. I'd like to leave to a quick few more things on how this is. Thank you all.
I should have said we were here. But would we be informed of when they intend to ceremonial or rising at each of the buildings? That would be good, in terms of timing and I can't remember.
Okay, so the, I'm gonna try to keep us moving. So I'm gonna ask you folks if you could just move the conversation a little further. But thanks again. Okay, so our next items are the two policies for first reading. Beth, Diane, do you have to say anything?
Sure, I can just introduce it as, these are two policies that we need, according to the Agency of Education, for our grants. They're policies to follow, but we need them to be able to spend our grants. And we are getting monitored, fiscal monitoring, on May 30th. So we need to know where we're at.
Okay.
They don't ask for that.
Simple. We're not gonna have a second reading before that.
Yeah, I know, that's okay.
Okay, Diane?
Okay, on policy F24, conflict of interest. In the third paragraph, first line, interest is capitalized. I'm not sure that it necessarily needs to be.
No, probably shouldn't.
So we might want to alter that. I don't think it alters the meaning of the, of the policy.
Anything else? Any other questions or comments, either F24 or F23? And we don't take action till second reading.
Till a second reading.
Right.
At least they're in the process.
Anything else? All right, let's move on then to our next agenda item. And this is an administrative update on the EHS grading. Rob, would you like to come up and join us? There's a seat right next to Nick.
So thank you. From the May 1st meeting, there's been obviously two weeks that have passed. And I have basically three points to make as I update from the previous session. Excuse me. So one of the concerns, since we left the meeting, was whether we were able to transition with juniors next year with the proposed grading scale. And the short answer is yes, we can do that. I also want to point out that one of the questions raised towards the end of the session last time was a kind of a general comment about, well, going from, passing from 60 to 69 and changing that, how is that gonna work? And so after some consultation and things of that nature, to reiterate, next, the current juniors this year, moving into next year, that will not be an issue in terms of a smooth transition with the benefits that the modification to the grade scale will have. As a point of clarification, right now, well, at the end of another month, each semester, the GPA is recalculated, and it's a numerical number. So the first time colleges or universities will see the current grade scale, the proposed grade scale next year, or any other grade scale, is when the student submits the application, visa, naviance, in their application process in the fall of their senior year. So basically, the numbers will remain the numbers in terms of the GPA. And what we will do next year, of course, is have the modification of the grading scale. So that's how that will move and work smoothly moving forward. The second point, in terms of the change in the grading scale and retroactivity in terms of grades, we are not going to change grades as of July 1. So for example, the way the school profile reads this year is 70 to 100. So if a student were to achieve a grade under 70 as of July 1, we're not gonna retroactively go back and say, automatically, now you pass. No, that new scale will not be specifically in play until the next school year. But in terms of the numerical GPA, that still will roll as it is this year and as it has been for years prior to that. The third point, in terms of the school profile, we're gonna be meeting with UVM admissions folks over the summer to tailor a modification to meet the needs of colleges and universities in terms of a clear message going forward. And we will have the updated school profile on our Essex High School homepage by August 29. And that's the first day of school for next year. So that profile will be updated then for everybody to see. So that's the update.
There was also a question about how the proficiency for the function, these are transferable skills, thank you.
So the, yes, the transferable skills, we actually worked on faculty-wise, the fifth transferable skill today. And that will also be in the Power School, like a dropdown menu. And I'll have more information on that as we get closer to next August. But the transferable skills for next year will not be included in the transcript. That's for 2020.
Okay, and there was some discussion about whether to keep the 1, 2, 3, 4 scale for that, or whether use something else would make that clear.
That's still a work in progress, and we're looking to get information from other schools, not only in Chittenden County, but in Vermont, because that's an Act 77 requirement, as you're aware. So we do have principals groups that we stay. So we do have principals groups that we stay in touch with each other. So that will be determined. But once again, the rubber hits the road 2020. So that will be the time when we really wanna be refined on that component of it. Yep.
All right, questions? Brendan?
So I apologize for missing the first update.
Sure.
But I did have a community member ask me about the retroactivity issue and felt very strongly in favor of it. So I'm wondering if somebody could just explain to me sort of the pros and the cons of the retroactive issue and why that's something, somebody would be really strong, feel strongly about, what we're not doing.
Well, the answer, the short answer to that is we're, this school year for another month, we're in a 70 to 100 system. And the failure, if you wanna use that term, would occur from 69 and below. With the modified scale, which is proposed to start next year, that is different. So teachers are working with students on course expectations, forms that have been established in either September or January, if it's a semester-long course. And they're working hard with students right now who may be on the precipice of passing or not passing. And then to automatically change things after the fact, teachers would not support that at all.
The idea is that you know what you signed up for at the beginning of the school year.
Absolutely.
And to change the rules at this point.
Yes. And I think the request from the petitioners, one of the main requests that I would speak for them, was to have this current junior class in a more favorable light next year. That will occur.
That will occur.
Yeah.
Could you be really specific about how that will occur? Are you saying that next September, if I have an A, no, let's say I have an 85, and right now, I, you don't have all the scales up there, so I don't.
I can explain, so I said, and so right now, a B is an 87 to an 89. And next year would be an 83 to an 86, just using that B comparison.
And it would translate to what on the GPA scale?
So the B next year being 83 to 86 would be the 3.0.
Right.
So, and, and the current scale will not be in play for any colleges and universities and any applications next fall. So the numerical scale, 0 to 100, is still how we calculate the GPA.
So a student now that has a 91, right?
Yeah.
91, because your, when, when you look at your profile, they don't have the letter grades. They have the number grades. So if you have a 91, then your GPA is a 3.33, which is common to other schools around here. It's the letter grade, if you take off the letter grade, then it's common. Because now it matches with other GPAs across in this Chittenden County and most places, colleges too.
Chittenden County, yes.
So in the fall, you're gonna take a GPA of, I don't know, 3.2, it's gonna be, I'm not gonna have exact numbers. It's gonna become a GPA of 3.5 or 3.7.
Yeah, along those lines. And like I said, you'll see it on the school profile when you get that.
Right, okay. I just wanted to be sure I was clear.
That's the update, that's the switch for.
This is, yeah. Kelly?
So just as, as somebody who doesn't have a student who gets numerical grades on grade reports yet, to understand this, a junior will finish this year and receive their grade report. It will say your overall GPA is 2 point X.
No, it's, no, they won't get that. What they, what each student receives, right now, let's say if a student transferred, which we actually had one three weeks ago, at the bottom of the transcript that it reads now is, I'll make up a number, 94.15. That's what goes out. So 94.15 in this year's scale is different than what 94.15 will be in the proposed scale.
What I'm trying to ask is, okay, let's say that we have a junior who is considering just like going to Simon's Rock College of Bard and not coming back for senior year. So they get their transcript next month and it says you have a GPA of 2 point X. But then they decide to come back to Essex High School and they wanna apply early decision to NYU. And they ask for their GPA in September. Will they get the same report that was generated in June? Or will they get a report with a new number of 3.0 on it?
To repeat the report.
Okay.
Well, we have to, we have to, we have to draw a line somewhere. And we can't bounce back and forth from current scale to new scale retroactively, which would be a disservice to the teachers in the current system.
I just come from the paper era, when you get, the system generates something in June and that's what you have until December when it generates a new thing. So it's useful to understand this.
But what we generate is numbers, the 94, not the 2 point. And the scale will be identified in the school profile. And when the application is sent by the student in the fall, the scale is sent with it. So that's when they will see it, they being the college or university.
So Rob, let's say that I have a current sophomore.
Yeah.
In this one, I leave, surely it'll be a junior. So how is there, how does this affect them? So when does that conversion happen for their cumulative GPA?
So they, like the juniors and like the freshmen, at the end of this year, will have a numerical GPA expressed, 90.2 numbers, whatever it may be, which is placed against the current grading scale. And then the number carries over, but the grading scale is, from the proposal, different to meet the needs of being similar to schools in the county. So there's nothing, we're not going in and changing grades.
So in other words, the colleges move with our new grading equivalent scale?
Right.
Yes.
Yes.
To what?
Yeah, there's no, there's no going back in and changing grades in retroactivity.
No, I don't say change grades, but the conversion will happen. So their cumulative GPA, by the time they graduate in two years, okay, we'll have caught up with them.
Yeah.
When they apply to schools.
Yeah, right.
Because we keep keeping those numerical grades under.
So the students at the end of the school year will end up with the grades based on the present system. And then next year, the, will be reflective of the new system. But I think you've already answered the question for those that unfortunately failed the course based on present, will not in essence walk in the new school year, find out to have actually passed the grade.
Well, for a particular course, because we are under the current system.
And the current, and when it ends, it ends, and then the new one takes place.
Right. So if a student is unsuccessful in course X.
Yes.
They'll know that in June, and then they will know, they either have to retake it or some other like course to get the necessary credit. Right, the proficiency.
Okay, any other questions or comments from the board?
I went back and looked at my kids' transcripts just to remind myself what shows up on it. And it is just that 1 to 100 that shows up down in the corner. It is also the only thing you ever see on a Power School report or the transcript or report card. So nowhere, honest to God, I actually had no idea what the letter grade equivalent has been. But I can see where the communication is gonna need to be really well thought through. Because without, I know communicating that the 92 point whatever is now a 3.33 and would have been, I don't know, not that.
Less than.
Less than, that is one thing. The letter part of it feels as though that's gonna be more difficult to communicate for students coming from two different systems, basically.
That's why we're meeting with the college admissions coach this summer.
Okay.
Because we wanna have clear communication as well, believe me.
Well, and I think the piece that we were all very concerned about was that, that GPA conversion is the same as those around us, because for things like merit scholarship and often just even cut lines for acceptance of even getting your application looked at.
Unfamiliar with the process.
Yeah, was, was disadvantageous. So I think to do that is really important for the kids that are applying in the fall. Thank you.
Yep.
So let's remember, this is an administrative decision. It's not something that we're gonna take action on. I will let the audience comment if anyone would like to. Yes?
John, I mean, I'm just, you know, I'm looking at the extreme. Let's say this year, you know, the teacher evaluates my performance towards a standard and says that I'm 69. So 69, that tells me that, you know, I failed that class. So next year on my transcript, it's still gonna say 69. But now all of a sudden, you know, you're telling me that I've achieved enough towards those standards that I'm now passing. And I'm wondering, how does a teacher make that transition? So this year, I'm 69 and I'm failing. Next year, I'm 69 and I'm passing. And then just one step further, what about in terms of eligibility for extracurricular activities? So this year in the spring, I'm 69 and that may impair my ability to participate. But next year, that same time point, August 31st, I'm 69, but now it's passing.
So I could, I could tell you that in the first part of your comment, teachers are already working on the conversation of like-class teachers, all biology teachers or physics teachers, in terms of how they are going to collaboratively make sure that it is as smooth as possible for them. Because this has been a system that has been in place for a number of years. I'll just leave it at that. The second piece, which is a very interesting question, especially thankfully you're our girls' ice hockey coach, and I appreciate that. As we move towards a proficiency-based system, there's a lot of conversations in regards to, which haven't been decided yet, in terms of achieving proficiency and how that interlinks with transferable skills. For example, timely work completion. That's something that I think we would all adhere to and would want our sons and daughters to be 100% spot on. That doesn't happen, I know you know that. So that perhaps could be a way to link long-term desired skills beyond high school to college and the workforce as a component of eligibility. The other thing I would say, I would compliment Jeff Goodrich, since he's been our athletic director, in the sense that with our current system of eligibility, if a student is getting really close to becoming ineligible before the season starts, he meets with the student, puts them on an improvement plan, and they go to probation, they're not necessarily eliminated from the team. If they don't work to get off probation, that's a different conversation. But it used to be more cut and dry. And now we're trying to incentivize the student to stay with it, because we all know how important it is for students to be part of something. And they value oftentimes their extracurriculars. So that is a good question, there's more work to be done on that. I appreciate that comment.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Our next item is a presentation on our school district's continuous improvement plan. Amy and Beth, you do this, so I'll turn it over to you.
That clicker right there on the corner of the table. Hi. Um, any topics to mention? Um, unfortunately, this student is behind you, and there's some great pictures. Pretty.
And this clicker just moves? Okay. Hi.
Hi.
So tonight, we're gonna walk you through what we've been doing this year. It's been a very busy year, year one of Essex Westford School District. And a big part of it has been thinking about our continuous improvement planning as we head into the following year. There's some parts of it that's some language, that's sort of Vermont Agency of Education language. And if I say something that doesn't make sense to you, or if I use a term, please stop me. But I mostly wanna kind of walk you through the journey so that you can see where we, how we arrived at the place that we did, and then answer any questions that you have. So what is a continuous improvement plan? For those of us who've been in this, in this world or on this board for a long time, these replace what you would have remembered as action plans. School quality standards brought, school quality standards required that all schools have action plans, that they be written based on data, they had a recommended template, and that they drove school improvement. Usually they were one, two, or three years long. Continuous improvement plans replace those. That's the term that was used in the new Vermont Education Quality Standards. They drive local improvement efforts, they identify specific resources and outcomes related to the efforts. And it will drive the development of school continuous improvement plans. So in the past, by and large, should I stand closer to it? Past, by and large, you'd see school action plans, maybe you'd see a district action plan. The processes that we're following around continuous improvement planning, as is outlined by Vermont Education Quality Standards, is a little bit different. It's, there's a requirement that we have a district continuous improvement plan, and that our school continuous improvement plans are sort of built underneath them. I already talked about this, how they're different than action plans. But there are some significant differences that we're experiencing, we've had to navigate. We now, where we didn't need to submit action plans to the Agency of Education, they do require that we submit them and that they approve them. That's a new relationship that we're having with the Agency of Education around this. They have a new piece of software that actually ties our continuous improvement plan with our acceptance of our federal grants. So they're going in and they're looking to see that anything we ask for in our consolidated federal grants are actually outlined in our continuous improvement plans. And that they're, they're going to be incorporated into our, the new state school accountability system, which falls now into this new Office of Education Quality Assurances. We won't talk with you about it tonight, but we've been identified to be, participate in Ed Quality Review next year. And they'll be looking at our statements and our actions and our data related to our continuous improvement plan. This is some language that I won't read to you, but it's just some general language. I think Lorna is forwarding this PowerPoint to you. There's actually several pages in the Vermont Education Quality Standards that speak to continuous improvement plans, but I just chose a few pieces here. This is a graphic that may look familiar to you, because our fearless leader brought this to you back early on in the process, to talk about how she was gonna lead us through the development of a new district vision and its relationship to school improvement. So I wanna talk with you about the journey of how we got to this document. And you'll see some great pictures. Look at that group of people. This was last summer when we were well rested. And we began, we were in this room and we began unpacking through Beth's facilitation, our values and our belief statements. And you can see sort of our messy posters on the side there, and that was our lunch break. Throughout this process, Voices for Education have been hosting community engagement events. You can see a number of people, look at that good-looking man next to that poster. With the idea that collecting the four words, that activity of the four words was helping to contribute to and really kind of distill community, students, staff, belief statements, value statements. Concurrently, in the fall, the leadership team decided as we wanted to learn together. And so we were provided with a few examples, so some texts that we could read, but we felt like we really wanted to focus on equity. So we chose this text, Building Equity Policies and Practices to Empower All Learners by Smith, Frye, Pumpean, and Fisher. And we did a monthly chapter book read. And again, Beth facilitated that. Voices for Education continued their work, hosting community engagement events, collecting more of those four words and putting them together. In September, at our September early release, all faculty members came together to also participate in values and beliefs work using the four words. And this is a little bit of a Wordle that was created that day. It was quite a task, by the way. There were teachers in every room in this district, all contributing while a Wordle was being created. finished our book reader on equity, kind of defining what would a theory of action look like. We were, we participated in a full-day retreat. I think Beth mentioned this to you early on. We met in January over at Holy Family, and we began by having the student members of VFE lead us in activities around values and beliefs, and equity again came up several times in that work. And then you can see, we sort of sat in a circle at the end and started to draft out what would a vision statement look like. In spring, we then, you know, you need to kick the tires on these things, right? So we then took that statement, we brought it back to faculty again, another enormous undertaking, where we had the teacher sit down and say, so if you had this vision statement, what would that look like in your classroom? What would it look like in your school? And what would your role in that be? And then, do you have any further feedback on that vision statement? We used a survey following that to get more feedback. Voices for Education continued their fine work. They showed up at the Fine Arts Night to continue to collect feedback. And we sent out a survey to students. In March, most of the Essex Westford School Districts were able to attend. It was sort of a funny coincidence. This book came out that we read two thousand seventeen, published by ASCD. And ASCD, which is this Association of Supervision Curriculum Development, is this great, big educational conference. It's like the Grammys of educational conferences, and it's never in New England. And it was. It was in Boston. And not only was it in Boston, but the authors of this book came and did a two-day pre-conference. So we said, we have to do this. Unfortunately, it was during parent conferences. So it was really hard to get all school leaders there, but we got most school leaders there. We spent two days with these authors, who were incredible. We're hoping to continue to do work with them next year. Around that same time, the Vermont Agency of Education, the Office of School Assurance, came out with a template for their continuous improvement plan. So we began thinking, how can we use this template? And then, how can we use all this good work that we did and make our continuous improvement plan kind of fit? These are, through the Building Equity book, and I do hope you get a chance to read it. We've talked about providing the board with the book, The Five Domains of the Building Equity Taxonomy. Each one of these has a chapter devoted to it. It has survey questions and needs assessments designed around it, self-reflection. We've already begun engaging in this to see where we kind of fall on these statements. So this is our continuous improvement plan. And what you're going to see in the next couple of slides is simply this, cut and paste. Here is our vision statement, growing hearts and minds for better today and tomorrow, every day, every way, everyone. And you can imagine how many times we word smith that one. We were everybody, we're everyone, everyone came before every day.
[inaudible]
Here's the theory of action that your leadership team came up with, and that is, and I will also say that, I want to go back to the theory of action. I think I raced through that a little bit. We were also reacting to data in front of us. We were looking at student data, but we're also looking at the results of the DMG report, both the state report as well as our, our own district findings. We have a team that's attended the state meetings around that, and so that was sort of rustling around in our heads as well when we were thinking about our theory of action. And this is what we came up with. When we deepen our commitment to each other and to continuous growth for everyone, and that means students and it means teachers, then our practices create equitable, authentic, inclusive learning experiences that benefit all students. We then generated a list of values and aspirations. We have scrolls and scrolls and scrolls of poster paper sitting back in our office. I was telling Beth, our office is looking like a little bit of a fire hazard. So we sat down and we went back to the beginning, and we pulled out all of the scrolls from the teachers and the students, and we looked at the, the Wordles, and we identified a set of values, what we felt like was a manageable list of values and aspirations. It's not all values and aspirations, but we felt like it encapsulated sort of what we were seeing in that language. You have a copy of that right now. And then, we took a shot at trying to write measurable outcomes. Again, these aren't all the things that we care about in this district by any means, but they felt like they were sort of touchstone points for us towards this vision. And then I wanted to take this. So what you don't have is the seventeen-page document that I had to submit to the Agency of Education. I'm happy to get that for you, but my, my sort of discomfort to just hand it to you is that it was written in sort of Agency of Education language. So for example, instead of action steps, they call it change ideas. Instead of needs and assessment, it was a root case analysis. And so the language of it, it's just sort of hard to just hand out and say, read it. It's a little bit like when you press print on TurboTax and you get to the end. So what I did is I made a graphic of that large document. So what you're going to see is the vision and the theory of action. These five areas right here, we were successful in trying to figure out how to take all of this information and make it fit into the five domains of the Building Equity Taxonomy, which fall along here. And then underneath here, where the Agency of Education document will call these change statements, these are our action statements. These are the things we think we need to do this year to move us on these particular points.
To get to the theory of action.
To get to the.
Lead us to our vision.
Thank you. Now, that text in black at the bottom, if you hold on a second, you're going to see some repetition. That bottom one says, provide professional learning. Now, this is, this was the limitations of the state document. We were only allowed three change ideas. So I wanted to have provide professional learning and do PLCs, and we had to put it into one. So, but you'll see that that came up on all five of those areas, our commitment to professional learning communities and our commitment to professional learning. But you'll also see some others. And what I'm going to do is I'm going to click to the next slide, and you're going to see where I'm going to take that repetition and thin it down to just show you, these are essentially the action steps or the change ideas that we're going to focus on next year to get us to that theory of action and that vision. Provide high-quality proficiency-based first instruction and tier-two interventions. That is a huge body of work that we want to keep our eyes on, and we're committed, in particular through our work with DMG, to be looking at how are we supporting those struggling learners. We want to ensure equitable access to all students to challenging curriculum. We want to look at the curriculum that's provided to our students, particularly in flexible groups, inflexible groups, levels, and ask ourselves the question, do all students have equitable access to rigorous curriculum? We want to focus on social-emotional first instruction and tier-two interventions. The word resiliency and climate came up a lot in our work on theory of action, supporting students that independence, that self-accountability, that self-direction. And also supporting students and families who, who have particular needs that we feel responsible to be able to support. We want to, and this really came out of the DMG, we want to examine our school structures and our staffing models to figure out, are they best organized to meet the needs? It's the day, it's the calendar, it's the schedule, it's teacher class size, it's how many minutes of intervention in each building. So we really want to look at that to see if we're designing our system to be able to meet the needs of students. We're committed to providing personalized learning and flexible pathways, and one of the outcomes is specific around ensuring that we have high-quality personal learning plans in place. This one came across, I said earlier, around our commitment to professional learning communities, and already people are pretty excited about the opportunity to be able to have regular professional learning community meetings district-wide and within their schools next year. We've talked about this one for a long time. I know both former districts have talked about this, and we've talked about this this year, the idea to implement a growth-based supervision and evaluation system. If we believe in growth-based systems for our students, we also want them for our staff and our teachers. And our commitment to increasing student voice and community engagement, which I think that this new district has benefited greatly from. So in terms of next steps, the principals met and looked at our last draft, gave a little bit more feedback. I made some revisions to it. We've submitted this to the Agency of Education so that we can connect it to our continuous, I'm sorry, our consolidated federal grants application, which is due this week. Each school is going to be building upon the district continuous improvement plan. They took that, that one-sheeter, this side right here, and Beth nicknamed it a placemat, and I watched one principal say, I'm just going to lay this down and think about what's my school's part in this. We're going to continue to develop our own learning around equity through full faculty trainings and book reads. We're exploring the idea of buying the book that we read for all faculty and finding ways to facilitate those conversations and continue our relationship with those authors, and do some self-reflection about how we're doing on those points. We want to look at the outcome statements, and I've already started to do this, and try to figure out what kind of baseline data do we have on all of those outcome statements, so we can sort of put an anchor in it and figure out what would it look like to progress along that. And we have a district professional learning community task team that's actually meeting tomorrow to determine our next steps in developing both school and district-wide PLCs for eighteen nineteen. Any questions? Any discussion? Thank you for letting me ramble through that so quickly.
I have to say that since I was unable to go to the leadership team, they, oh, I have something else. Oh, I have more. And what everybody said to me after, in their own time, they either emailed me, called me, or when I was meeting with them, is how Amy was able to take all the work we've done this year and put it into a continuous improvement plan that we wholeheartedly believe in and know it's going to work. And that's like, that's my first time that I have felt like that over a continuous improvement plan. And that's straight across. All the principals are just, because it's, as you see, it's the work that we've been doing, and it just fit into what we needed. So thank you for your hard work in tying all that together.
My pleasure in assisting those schools. But I will also, I will also say that the principals, I think, felt that, you know, when you're deep in something, and they, they were able to step back and see it and say, oh, I can, I can see now in writing what we did this year. And similarly, a principal approached me today and said, how soon can I share this with my staff? Because I think they're going to see themselves in this, and I want them to see them, all of that engagement that we did and that vision work that they'll see themselves in it.
Brendan?
So two questions. Can you remind me or us how we got to this point in needing to be in a continuous improvement plan? And then, based on the work that we're doing, is there any guess as to when we'll be out of the need to have a continuous improvement plan?
So what I'm hearing in you is memory.
Right.
So, so we used to have action plans.
Yeah.
Like you just had them because they made sense. And then, when you went to school accountability jail, you then had to have a continuous improvement plan.
Oh, okay.
That was old language from the Agency of Education.
We're all in jail, no.
We're not, we're not in the school accountability jail. No, they had a sort of called Green Mountain Star, and we had these. So they just took the term, and they sort of renamed it what we would have done for action planning.
Okay, so this is not.
Not in school accountability jail. This is not a, this is not a responsive.
I think I was on the board when.
You may have.
When Essex Town had to go.
I had to go.
Right.
Yeah.
I sometimes forget the cameras on when I make these.
Thank you. It's very, that's very helpful for me. Thank you.
Yes. Thank you, Amy. Good presentation. I, you know, I, I try to step back and look at all of this. I have sat through a number of organizations where there have been lofty goals, and sometimes they fail, and sometimes they take a lot longer than we initially thought. So I'm more of the numbers. And the way that you can prove to me that these measurable outcomes are occurring is by grade, by free and reduced, by cohort group, comparing Essex results to South Burlington, Burlington, Shelburne, and MMU. And I want to track those numbers based upon, on some periodic basis throughout the year, end of school year, to confirm that all of these efforts are producing results. Now, having said that, I think we're on the right track.
Can you go back to that measurable slide, the outcomes? Because I can explain. So some of those, the ones that have to do, yeah, that one, thank you. The one that has to do with the content areas, we can definitely, like the math one in the end of third grade. Amy and I were looking today just saying, okay, so where are we in third grade right now? And how many of our students, it's seventy-five percent, meet the standard?
If you have a level measure or a statement, it would be around seventy to seventy-five percent for that point in time. So math, after we left, we're about sixty.
Sixty-five to seventy percent, again, depending on the measures you use. Yeah. So those we can compare to the surrounding schools. Some of these measurable outcomes are what we want to see in, in EWSD as a new district, because they relate to our visions and aspirations, our values and aspirations that then lead us to our vision. So some of these, we won't be able to get from others. We can, as a personalized learning plan, we will be able to look at those to see how many students have those, and hopefully it's one hundred percent, but that they're actively engaged in those. And that is a goal of the superintendents in the regional area also, so I can bring that data. But some of these I won't be able to bring to compare to. We have some surveys that we want to do, and.
The reason I'm concerned is there have been a number of past administrators who believe that improving scores for the free and reduced group can't be done.
Well, you can't have that belief. You have to believe it can be.
I have stated that very emphatically, that we can do something about this group. And that's one of the reasons why the whole group is not moving.
Right.
Together at the same level. So I believe you're on the right track here, and this, the investment in the lower grades, right up through, but continuous, not only continuous improvement, but coordinated curriculum is strategically important. And so there are a number of changes, but I, I still lean towards the data.
Can you go back one more? Because our theory of, oh, no, their, theory of, the theory of action is really built around that first instruction and improving for everyone. And that's the equitable.
Right.
Authentic, inclusive.
I agree.
That's creating that population that you were speaking of and raising them.
That's right.
High standards for all.
Right.
Yeah.
And Al, I just, I guess, I want to reiterate, because I, we've had these conversations. Within all of the work that, that the leadership team did around theory of action, your sentiment was replicated, and it's why you see the language, and maybe it's not sort of clear there.
Right.
That it really was about all students, not some, all students. We talked a lot about students of poverty. We talked about students coming to school with food insecurities. And how do we, how do we move up a state assessment data point? Is that the right thing to be looking at when we're talking about students who are struggling to that extent? But that was a commitment of the leadership team to focus on that. We also have looked at the achievement gap around free and reduced lunch, and we haven't moved it tremendously. And we want to look at lots of data points to see, are we following the right data points? Are we doing the right things for these students?
Right.
It's one of the reasons why the leadership team has really made a commitment to the professional learning communities also, and that collaborative time, that's what we need to work on.
Yeah. We're giving up some seat time for that investment.
Yep.
And the, the numbers and the performance of the outcomes will really tell me that this investment is paying off. I just want to make sure. I think it's important, not only for the board, but for the students and their growth.
Yep.
We want to make sure that we're not taking a step down here.
Well, and if you also look, I'm sorry, if you also look at, I think it's the fourth bullet we have, all students are physically active and have access to healthy food choices. That's critical for our students of poverty.
Yes. Agreed.
Because this is a meaningful meaning, I just want to say that I have never heard any administrator say that you can't do it, or that you don't continually try to do it. So I just, I'm just feeling need to clarify that for the record. Kim?
I agree with Al that it would be good to see those numbers moving in the right direction. But at the same time, I feel that, just in my perspective of moving to Vermont from much more highly populated areas, we have to be careful in any data analysis that we are looking at numbers that are statistically significant and not being elated or depressed about numbers that are a really tiny number. Because if, if our free and reduced lunch is something like twenty percent, then at any given elementary school, we have maybe twenty kids in Essex, in Essex Junction, maybe forty kids in Essex Town, maybe like four or five kids in Westford. And to see those numbers change from year to year based on people moving in and out of the district, you end up with a population that's really small and could be affected by a lot of things that make it hard to draw an effective conclusion.
Yeah, I think the, the trend has been, over the last ten, twenty years, hasn't changed.
It could be that everyone who does well on free and reduced lunch in Colchester moved there from Essex, or moved there from Twinfield.
The trend is also across the state. It's, it's pretty.
But there's downward pressures on every area of education, simply because reading is not a part of our culture. So we always need to try, and we always need to assess, but there are just challenges to that.
Hopefully not, we're not.
Okay, thanks, Kim. Other comments or questions? Kim?
Quite as specific as Al's request, but I appreciate it, especially the measurable outcomes component, and would look forward to maybe even in the summer retreat, talking about what reporting out on that looks like. And it was really exciting to see reference to student performance and outcomes, just because the body of work this year hasn't had that focus. It has for you guys, but for us, as we sit here.
Yeah.
It's really nice to see it come through in language that's reflecting the values you were talking. about what reporting out on that looks like. And it was really exciting to see reference to student performance and outcomes, just because the body of work this year hasn't had that focus. It has for you guys, but for us, as we sit here, it's really nice to see it come through in language that's reflecting the values you were talking about and the outcomes we're looking for for kids. Thank you.
It's been great work. Great team to work with.
Very fortunate. Other comments or questions? Anybody? Do you have any?
I just have a question. I mean, I think, you know, the things that you're going to do for continuous improvement, you know, are terrific. I'm just wondering, you know, have you identified, you know, any additional resources, you know, that you're going to be able, that you're going to acquire? I mean, listening, you know, to Al's comment, you know, about contact time between, you know, students and teachers, maybe you have a little give and take there to form these professional learning communities, you know, within the school day, so they don't have to, you know, pay for additional resources after the school day. So, I guess I'm kind of used to seeing in these sorts of presentations, you know, the resource, additional resources that you may need in order to, you know, achieve, you know, this improvement.
Can I answer? Yes, and that was some of the feedback that the leaders, the former action plan, if you remember that template, usually had sort of a timeline and resources. We're at the point where it took kind of a body of work in this new district to get to this point, so that's our next body is to figure out, so what are those resources? Now, as I said earlier, the state has tied continuous improvement planning to our consolidated federal grants. So, that's required me, as somebody who manages that, to be able to say, so our Title I funds, how is it moving any of those points? So, resources that are given to us, how do we sort of make sure that it's put in the right place? I think some of these other areas will come back, certainly at a board level, again, when I think about access to healthy food choices, that's a budget piece. There's some policy pieces around that. Time for students to be physically active. So, I don't see this as a one-year plan. I think that this is a good opportunity for some self-reflection about how we're doing on some of these points, using those equity tools, and then to be able to figure out, what are the additional resources? Or some of the conversations the principals have already had is about restructuring existing resources. I know that wasn't a very specific answer, but resources are on our mind.
I'm sure it will all come up again in a better time. Other, anything else? Amy, thank you very much. And Beth, it's an incredible bond that's happened this year, and I'm sure I speak from the whole board when I say, "We look forward to seeing the fruits of this labor" for our students as we move forward. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Anything from communications?
Liz had a few things for DFE. We are changing the meeting date from Monday, May 21st to Tuesday, May 22nd. Dinner at 5:00 and meeting starts at 5:30. Also, wanted to mention, the diversity club is taking the lead, but with the help of Voices, the multicultural community potluck dinner that they did last year will be going on Saturday, June 2nd, from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. at Maple Street Park. So, absolutely attend if you can make it.
Great. Questions? Okay. Kim?
I have an unrelated task team question. Do we need to do anything to officially dissolve the policy committee, or are we, like, on hiatus until it's needed again?
I mean, I think test teams are as we name them, and as you saw, I did not include a policy testing in the appointments for this year, so.
Did you name the appointments?
Yeah, you were part of the consent agenda.
Did I miss something?
If you look in the board notes under consent agenda, we see that.
All right.
Okay. Statewide updates, oh my gosh. Well, to be continued is probably the biggest statewide update. What you should all should know is that unfortunately, the miscellaneous ed bill that had the fixes for the election of school board members didn't make it to the finish line. And so, there is, Dylan is doing work behind the scenes to see if it can come up in the special session, or if it can be tacked on. I've suggested he should look into tacking it on somewhere else. I think that bill fell apart for the accounting preschool kids. The Senate had a very different construct from the House, and they couldn't come to agreement. Beth and I are meeting with Chris Leopold, I think, next week, and then we've been asked to meet with the town manager and the town clerk. So, I think we need to continue to move forward as if the fix didn't happen to make sure we don't end up in this situation that we were in this year. I don't think it's worth talking about what's going to happen with tax rates or any of that because there certainly, all indications are that a special session is going to happen. If it doesn't, then at future meetings, we can talk about what the yields are and what they will mean for our taxpayers. Does that make sense? Kim, anything else you would add?
I had participated in my VSA hat in a sort of town hall conference call in the governor's office with a number, with the acting AOE secretary and secretary, a few other people leading us, some of us on a conference call through the governor's five-year plan to stabilize education tax rates and reinvest savings. So, we shared many comments about some of the concerns surrounding the plan and some of the assumptions on which it's built, and the concerns regarding use of one-time money, and it would be difficult to know how impactful that was. I think it was their effort to, several times, not just in that conference call, but many others, I think they did similar town hall conference calls in an effort to get their story out, I think. I think I'm going to follow up with an email, just to sort of reiterate some of the points. The absolute application of ratios, I think, is problematic, but the conversations that have come from ratios being brought to the forefront, I think, is important. I think healthcare, I think the notion of statewide healthcare negotiation, I think, progressed quite well, actually, through both committees, but did not make it through and will likely be part of the, what is the session called that they're going to come back for?
Special session.
Special session. So, that is something that I think is in reasonably good shape to possibly come out of the process with some need to come up with a commission that would represent employers and employees and then negotiate at the statewide level. So, that looked promising, but we shall see. So, I think among the biggest concerns with the governor's proposal is, as much as anything, there's another sort of throw, sort of one-time money at it, again, so that he can keep a promise of not raising taxes. We tried to make the point that if we could just cover the problem caused by last year's one-time money use and allow the communities who have supported the budgets they voted on to experience just that increase. I think the assertion that we didn't, our people were voting and didn't realize the impact on taxes of their vote was somewhat insulting, given the efforts that I know we had made, and as the boards I sit on statewide have reflected similar conversations with our communities. And we tried to bring that point home. I don't know to what avail, because I'm guessing in an election year, that is going to be covered by something else. So, we'll see.
Questions? Okay. Okay, so, let's wrap up. Andre, you contacted me today and wanted to just make a statement, and I think this would be time to do that.
This week is National Police Week. And I think what spurred my reaching out to Martha was I saw her message about Teacher Appreciation Week, but given the last two years in the support and assurance that the police have given us to ensure continuing safety and monitoring and be available as needed, I'd like to take a moment to express, as a board, our appreciation for their service.
To the benefit to our students. Okay, thanks, Andre.
Thank you.
Okay, so, next meeting agenda, we're going to have reports on our enterprise funds, we'll have a transportation update. Does anybody have anything else beyond the usual things that we have every year?
There's been some testing that's been going on in the schools. I think it was S- is it SMAC?
Yeah.
When would those results be available?
They become available till the fall.
Okay. Just wanted to check.
Anything else for the next agenda? Okay, our takeaways.
It's in the announcements, what category as well, there's a 5K for mentoring happening this Saturday at 9:30 at Founders, and walk, run, stroll, however people would like to get through. The expectation is we're hopefully going to be expanding to our other buildings as well. And this is the only, this is the fundraiser that Friendships does all year. So, to the extent folks are available on Saturday morning at 9:30, we would love to have you join us. You can go to the Essex Chips website and register there ahead. You could register in person at the time. If you've got 10 people that want to do it with you, it's $10. If you're running by yourself, it's 25. But please come if you can.
Question as a stroller user, is the course paid?
Yes, yes, it is.
Okay.
Just, I'm not sure if everyone would have gotten the invite to this or not, but I'm pretty sure that everyone would be invited if they hadn't, but CTE is doing its recognition ceremony on June 7th at 7:00 p.m. And we had an RIB meeting last week, and they would love attendance, so I think that if you are able to come, since we are board that oversees them, that they would love to have you. We just should email over to Bob, and he can make sure that there's some space reserved if you're interested in attending.
Let's have a talk here. Okay, takeaways. So, clearly, I think it's worth putting the procedure related to the cycle in the takeaways and our action among the two requests. What else?
Policies.
The policies. The grading update.
And the grading update. Yeah. I think that's plenty, Patrick. Good luck explaining my attractiveness. Kim?
Do you want the policies or the presentation?
Continue.
Yeah, that's probably more important.
The policies could go next time.
Yes, because it's a second reading. So, I think that continuous improvement plan and that will be good. Thanks. Anything else? Okay, thank you all. I think it was a productive meeting, and we are a pleasure.